The hour of 7:30 having arrived, we'll call the meeting of Bridgewater County Council to order. We'll rise and do the Pledge of Legion.
United States of America, the Republic which is sand, one nation for God, individual, thirteen, justice.
Thank you. Before we begin tonight, I would like to pass on condolences to the family of Clyde F. Myers upon his passing on the 19th of December 2017. Myers served in Battery B, 398, Anti-Aircraft Battalion, 14th Armored Division, United States Army, European Theater of Operations, three major combat operations during World War II. He was an active, a volunteer at the Bridgewater Senior Center with many veteranizations. And also like to pass on condolences to the family of Richard Landry on his passing on the 31st of December 2017. Mr. Landry served in the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. He was an active as a volunteer at the Bridgewater Senior Center and with many veterans organizations. If we could have a moment of silence for those two fine men. Thank you. Moving on, I'd just like to remind everybody that BTV is here recording us, although you don't see them, all the cameras are up and around. They're in the back working very hard and we thank them for that. Moving on, we have no approval of minutes from the previous meeting. It was a long one with much public citizens' open forum and the council clerk is working diligently to get it all down, but not verbatim. Announcements from the President. We have a letter from the Knights of Columbus. The Bridgewater Knights of Columbus expresses its gratitude to the town of Bridgewater for allowing us to conduct our annual Tootsie Roll Drive on the weekend of September 30th to October 2nd. With your cooperation and support, the drive was successful and will enable us to continue to provide financial assistance to young people with special needs in the three Bridwaters, signed by Mr. Francis Cludier Brandt Knight. Additionally, with Mr. Perry having left the council last month, we do have a vacancy on the Community and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Souza had served ably there before, so I'm going to appoint him to fill that vacancy. And I'm sure you'll do a great job. And also finally, but not least important by any means, today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. We're unique in the town of Bridgewater in that we have a correctional complex in our town and corrections officers are in fact also law enforcement officers and do a great job down at that facility. We also have the Bridgewater State University Police Department who do a great job partnering with our town police department and making sure the campus is safe, not only for their students, but for all of Bridgewater residents and others who visit the campus. And of course, to the Bridgewater Police Department, if you've been following the news over the last couple of weeks during the holidays, they've had a very busy time of it and have done a great job, as always, responding to those things. So, thank you to all of those groups and on National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, we certainly appreciate you. There are no proclamations. Citizens' open forum. Anybody who'd like to speak from the public, feel free to step up and say anything, going twice, going three times. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have appointments. Community and Economic Development Director, Ms. Jennifer Lynn Burke. Is there a motion to approve? Made by Mr. Colum Bodas, seconded by Mr. Souza. Mr. Colum Bodas, can we defer to Mr. Dutton for discussion of the candidate and then we'll come back to you? Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, Ms. Burke is currently the principal planner in the town of Hoppington, but she's served for about 15 years in the town of Hudson. She has a good resume of experience. She's got some direct experience with community preservation. She's also got some direct experience with affordable housing trusts. So I think in addition to those experiences, she'll have a very, she'll do a really good job for us, bottom line.
Mr. Colum Bodas?
I have nothing to add.
Mr. Souza?
No.
Other discussion from the council. Seeing none, this will require a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. We have no hearings. We have no license transactions. That moves on to presentations. We have two tonight. The first is from Mr. Jim Pascal on various upcoming construction projects. Mr. Pascal, if you'd like to step up to the mic so folks can hear you and introduce yourself and the person with you, just for those two or three people in Bridgewater who don't recognize them.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Pascal. I'm with Troy Clarkson. And we are here tonight to outline a plan of revitalization for the center of town. We're excited to present that. And I greatly am thankful for members of the council, residents of the town, to hear that. And we look forward again to presenting. So, the first point of presentation will be one of the new buildings. This is a comprehensive proposal, folks. It speaks to not only the one building, but multiple buildings in the center of the downtown area on Broad Street, running from about 60, 60 Broad Street to 86 Broad Street, as well as 63 and 65. You may know some of those sites being the lots that are immediately adjacent to Bruno's on the left, and of course, across the street on the vacant lots and the old Friendly site, as well as the old Bowlin Alley. So, we're excited to, again, come before you and have this discussion with the hope that we can finally get something done that we're, again, pretty excited about. And we think that this proposal can not only be a great addition to the town of Bridgewater, but can be one of the fuels to the revitalization of the whole downtown area. So, again, we're very excited to have this discussion. We'll outline a little bit of it and then maybe take some questions afterwards if need be. Thank you. This, this, I'm sorry. This first building is 76-78 Broad Street. It encompasses 26 units along with four or five commercial spaces on the entire first floor. And the buildings next door will be very similar. And, again, we're very excited to propose this. I think there's nothing in the, not only in the center of town, but throughout Bridgewater that speaks to the, I think, the newness that we can create here and bringing, turning a new page for the town center and bringing some greatly needed resources into the center of town, both customers and people for some of the downtown businesses that are desperately needing that. I'll turn it over to Troy Clarkson. Many of you may know Troy as a former town manager. And he's been gracious enough to help us here. And so we're quite excited to have him join the team and help with our proposal. So, Troy?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. It's my pleasure and my honor to stand before you tonight. I am Troy Clarkson. I'm the principal in Clarkson Consulting LLC. And I've been retained by Mr. Pascal to assist him in the regulatory process for this project. I have to say before we begin the formal presentation that it's nice to be in this room. It's my first time in this renovated academy building. And the community deserves credit for doing a wonderful job and really honors honoring the rich history of this building. So it's, it's great to stand in here and not have the floors creak. Next slide, please. So, as Jim mentioned, he has owned property in this community for quite a long time, perhaps under the radar a little bit, but he has renovated and improved several properties here in town. In a minute, we'll show you an assessor's map of the multiple properties that he owns here in town. He has revitalized several decrepit facilities that are now a credit to the community. And places that used to be visited regularly by both the police and fire departments are now well-maintained and trouble-free properties. And we think that he has a really strong track record and really wants to bring that track record now to this important project that will help revitalize the central business district and bring in some, some much-needed revenue to the community. Next slide, please. Thank you. We can go on to the next slide as well. So, as Jim was discussing his plans for the properties on Broad Street with me, one of the things that I did was took a look at his project and wanted to make sure that what he's asking is consistent with some of the work that you have already done. And make sure that his proposal is consistent with the direction that you've set for the community. So we consulted, of course, the zoning bylaws. And we'll be talking a little bit about the Mixed Use Section 19 of the bylaws in a little bit. But we also consulted the housing production plan that the town just had completed and the central square pedestrian safety assessment that Howardstein Hudson recently did for the town, that speaks mainly to that central square area, but does spill over into the Broad Street and the central business district. We looked at the South Shore Chamber Housing Plan. That was just actually released a couple of months ago and how the elements of this plan fit with that. And last, but certainly not least, we've begun conversations with the university to try to gather their input and see how their strategic plan fits in with, with what Jim is trying to do. Next slide, please. And so we're going to spend just a couple of minutes explaining how what Jim is proposing does fit within those plans. The housing production plan has a goal, number two, to create, maintain, and preserve affordable multifamily units. And it speaks to leveraging in lieu of payments. And that's something that, that Jim will propose in this plan is to make in lieu of payments, for instance, a payment per unit when building permits are issued and donate money directly to the Affordable Housing Trust so that the town has a pool of money with which you can determine where and how best to construct affordable units. I understand that you're near that 10% threshold. However, having the flexibility of additional funds, I think, would be a real benefit to the community. In one of my previous positions, we actually negotiated just such an agreement where for a fairly large housing development, there was a per-unit donation made to the Affordable Housing Trust and it worked out very, very well. Next slide, please. We also, as I said, took a look at the central square assessment. And one of the goals there is to create walkability and livability and economic vitality. And of course, by adding several units into this district, but also adding with it some retail, I think it fulfills that goal. With some of the ways that these properties are designed, it will create a pedestrian-scale development that will encourage people to walk. And one of the options that's on the table, because Mr. Pascal controls several properties in the area, is to adjust the design of the project so that there is additional public parking created, which I know would not only be a community benefit, but is a stated goal of the community. And so we think that's important. Next slide, please. This project does all of these. And so these are existing conditions. Those photos you can see by the snow, actually, I just took yesterday. And we're aware that there's a real concern about the condition of that section of the town and that section of Broad Street. And one of the things that this project most certainly does is presents the opportunity to revitalize and to create something of which the community can be proud and something that will provide economic benefits for years to come. So what Mr. Pascal is proposing, we'll take the community from this to the next slide to this. Now, this is a conceptual drawing of what's proposed at 76 to 78 Broad Street. What we have for you tonight is also a map, the assessor's map of the area, so that you can look comprehensively at the properties that Mr. Pascal controls. But this is the concept plan for that site. But one of the things we hope to accomplish tonight is to gain some consensus, to put together a group of officials in town where we can meet together and really brainstorm about how best to develop the entirety of the properties, rather than taking them piecemeal. What we would like to do is to actually meet and and develop a plan for all of the properties. And so the property we're talking about right here in this picture is the 76 Broad Street, which is here. But Mr. Pascal also controls the properties on either side of that. This is the properties next to Bruno's, and he controls those as well. We'll have, just as an aside to update you, on a project that we're working on on Grove Street as well, something the university's pretty excited about. But for tonight, we'd like to focus on that. So one of the things we'd like to do, and we think that the bylaw, as written, as passed by this council just a few years ago, allows us to do, is to take a comprehensive look at all of those properties and see how they might be developed in total. Next slide, please. So for all of the properties in this Broad Street area, the overall proposal is for approximately 80 residential units, understanding some of the concerns that exist with three-bedroom units. These would be primarily one- and two-bedroom units, all rentals on five buildings that would include probably 12, 10 to 12 commercial spaces. And if possible, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, depending on how the buildings are laid out, that could result in some additional public parking. But at any rate, there will be ample parking in the area and an ability to service the retail operations here, to have some public parking for those businesses, and the ability to have some pedestrian scale traveling around so that people could shop in those businesses. Next slide, please. So it's important that I, that I say when we start to discuss numbers, that these are conceptual based on the numbers that I discussed in the previous slide. There's a sliding scale and the, the final numbers could be very different. And they obviously include assumptions. That's on the right side. On the left side, those are actuals of what we see right now for the five parcels that are being discussed. The aggregate value per the town assessor's records is about 1.6 million. So the town's currently receiving about $25,000 a year in taxes, based on the information that I got from the assessor's records on the website earlier this week. So what we believe with the kind of development that I spoke of a minute ago, that we could increase that assessed value by approximately 30 million. And, and I'm happy to share with you the assumptions that we used. Again, that could be a sliding scale. Those numbers could, could vary. But when you look at the size building that's being proposed and five of those with that square footage, and then I, in coming up with this, looked at how similar properties in town over at Claremont, but other apartment buildings in town and how those were valued. And that's, that's where I came up with that approximate value. But just for the purposes of an academic discussion, if we increase the value of those lots to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million, then we're talking about an annual increase, a sustained annual increase every year of more than $400,000 a year. Now, that doesn't speak to, and we'll talk about that in a future slide, personal property taxes for the businesses or meals taxes from restaurants that may open up there. That's just property taxes. So we're talking about a profound impact for the community and because of the density, not a significant drain on, on services. Next slide, please. Additional benefits to what's being proposed, again, the potential for a meals tax, a significant increase in the meals tax. Out of 10 to 12 retail spaces, several of them would likely be food service restaurants. And, and so you'd see an increase in the meals tax. As I discussed before, just from a conceptual standpoint, if there are 80 units and there's a $5,000 contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust per unit, we're talking about several hundred thousand dollars in the Affordable Housing Trust that the town could use for whatever purposes it deemed appropriate. Public parking, I've discussed this a couple of times. The plan, as it's been put together, again, looks at both regional and local plans that the town has received or paid for. And this plan is consistent with those goals. And probably most importantly, it begins to eliminate the blight that exists in that part of town and to really spur a revitalization. Some of you may know that I've been personally involved in revitalization projects in, in a couple of communities, most notably many years ago during my tenure as a selectman in the town of Falmouth. And that has become, two decades later, one of the, the shining examples of revitalization in the Commonwealth. And what I've found is, when you have a private investor that's willing to invest millions of dollars into a community, that tends to become contagious. And what you see is that that development, good, responsible development, tends to stretch itself out on either side of a development like this. Now, I can't predict for certain that that will happen here, but experience certainly tells me that that is more common than not, that when someone comes in and is willing to invest millions of dollars of private capital in a community, that sends a message to other good developers that it's a place where they can do business and be successful. So one of the things that we hope to to get your endorsement of tonight is to form an internal task force where we can bring together the Community and Economic Development Committee, the Community and Economic Development Department, the folks from Public Safety, perhaps a representative or two of this council, and meet in a working group and roll up our sleeves and really brainstorm about these proposals and what the best way is to move forward. So we're here well ahead of any filing with the planning board or the zoning board to seek your feedback and to really hope that we can work together with you to move the process forward. Mr. Pascal has owned the properties for some time and is anxious to move forward with something. And so we're hopeful that, that you'll agree to work closely with us to move this forward. One of the ways that we think we can, we can work together to get that done is by using the existing zoning bylaw. And the, the mixed-use section of the bylaw, we believe, provides the flexibility for the special permit granting authority, in this case, it's the planning board, to, to look at the project in its total and to impose some conditions. In this case, they would be conditions that would allow for some flexibility within the bylaw in the interest of some of the goals that are stated in that mixed-use bylaw in terms of economic development and providing dense housing to be allowed to move forward. So one of the things we'd like to do is to, to share with you our thoughts on that section of the bylaw and, and get some buy-in as to whether or not you think that that's an appropriate vehicle. If not, there are other ways that we can look at that, including making some adjustments to the existing bylaw. But, but I think Mr. Pascal feels strongly that this is a good, responsible, viable development for the town of Bridgewater. And we'd like to move forward. As I said, since Mr. Pascal has owned the property, some of them for many, many years, there is some urgency to be able to move forward with some rapidity. And so we're hoping that sometime this winter, within the next six weeks or so, we can move forward and actually make our filings before the appropriate regulatory boards. Next slide? I would like to thank, to recognize the outstanding support of the town manager in moving those slides for us. There was one other. So, Jim, do you want to just maybe explain?
Could you get near the mic so people can hear you on the TV?
So, this is a, this is a rendering of the back of 76-78, and it depicts the parking area. There is, for the first-floor businesses, there's 12 spaces that will be accessible just for the businesses daily in and out. There's a patio area for an outside restaurant, something that we got a lot of feedback from, that folks in town wanted to see, some of the folks in that area. There's 48 or so spaces that are contained in the back of the building, more than just depicted here. So there's plenty of off-street parking as well. I know that's a big concern in town. We would not try, of course, to take any of the spaces that would exist on the street. So this would, each one of these buildings would be self-contained. The parking for the residents, as well as the businesses, will be on-site for each, each building. So we believe that that's a, a very responsible scenario. And, again, the first floor would be all businesses with residents above. And, and again, as we talked to some of the folks in that area, there's certainly the ones that have businesses are, are very receptive to finding a way to get people into the downtown area. So, we believe this is the best way to do that. And it's been, of course, as Troy said earlier, it's been found to be a tried and true example in many other towns. And we believe that it can certainly happen here. And why can't Bridgewater be a shining example moving forward? Why can't it happen here? So we believe it can. We're prepared to do that. And we seek your support.
This is unrelated to the specific proposal tonight, but we thought just to bring you up to speed on some of the conceptual discussing, discussions we're having about the property that Jim owns on Grove Street. This is the old doctor's office right next to Harrington Hall, for those that may be familiar with it, that property. Jim has acquired that. It's a little over two-acre site. And, and so this is still in the conceptual process, but we're looking at a series of townhouses and significant green space on this property. Jim has already met with the president of the university about this project. And they are enthusiastically supportive of improving that and providing some housing potentially for graduate students or professors or staff members. And so that's pretty exciting. So we just, while we were here, wanted to let you know that we're working on that as well because you might hear some rumblings around town when the filings are made with the appropriate boards on that. So we wanted you to be up to speed. And finally, I'd like to say that I agreed to work with Jim because of his reputation and because of the work he's done elsewhere. He has done work in other communities, most specifically the city of Boston, for decades and has a stellar reputation as a responsible builder and developer who works with communities. And, and so it, I did my research before I agreed to, to come on board. And particularly in a town like Bridgewater where I have a history and care so much about the community. And so I think it's important that you understand that Jim's history is not just here, but he's been working as a responsible developer for many, many years and I think is ready to bring that, that commitment to this community. So, with that, unless you have anything further, I'll defer through you, Mr. Chairman, to members of the council who may have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for, for a very nice presentation there. Certainly opened it up at this point in time to questions from the council, recognizing that this is a conceptual idea, that we're not going to figure out anything here tonight. But things that look good, things that cause concern, I think, would be very helpful for both Mr. Pascal and Mr. Clarkson to, to note down and bring back and be able to talk about in the future. That said, Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Done a great job at moving slow. When we first started on the council, like my first week, I met with Troy, who was manager at that point. We talked about these properties even then. So that was six, seven years ago. So, a long time ago. In between there, we, we declared this street blight and slum, I think, was the terms we used for the, for the grants that we applied for. So everyone is well-aware that it's, you know, not, not in good condition. And you talked about the numbers come out. So a couple of questions regarding the concept. So I peeked at the presentation earlier this afternoon. And I drove by Pope Hall, which is University of Dormitory, which is about, in my mind, about the same height. Is that, is that about the same height of what you're proposing here?
That's correct.
Okay. And then you talked about multiple buildings. So that part, those parcels are on a hill. So it wouldn't be like a, a flat, visual, flat, five, four-story height. It would be kind of a sloping.
You see that slope?
Sloping. And then I, I think some people may be concerned when they hear 80 units across the entire structures. But you described it as one or two-bedroom units. So can you describe the size of those units?
Could we get Mr. Pascal's mic so people can hear the answer?
In context of what people might, might understand?
So they would, this, the, those single, the one- and two-bedroom units would be approximately 850 to about 1,100 square-foot units. So good-sized units. We're not, I said many, many years ago, when I came here, that if we can't do it right, we're not going to do it. And we want to really maintain that process. I believe that this is good, responsible housing for people that will be more than happy to live there, maybe some students. I'm hopeful that there's a lot of folks that would want to downsize and want to live in town and, and take advantage of all the opportunities that exist in the center of town, once we build it. Because I believe when we build it, they will come. So, these would be about, as I said, about 850 to 1,100 square-foot units, one- and two-bedroom, and with, with great amenities, elevated buildings, plenty of parking, probably a workout room or so, some of the things that are standard, granite countertops, hardwood floors, fireplace living rooms, things like that. Great amenities. I think people would be more than proud to live there. I think people would be more than proud to live there. By the way, this is, that's consistent with our apartments in town as well. Fireplace, living rooms, hardwood floors, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, condo-quality units, folks. So I think that's far better than what I've seen in this town over the many years that I've been here. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Clarkson or Mr. Pascal? Mr. George?
I can't see it, and I apologize for being late. Conceptually, where you have this planned out, is there only going to be one entrance off of Broad Street, or will there be multiple entrances to be able to get to the property?
So one driveway in and out for this particular building. It's on the left side of the building. I believe it's on this plan here. So almost as the old building that was there, there was a tenement building there, and the driveway was on the left side, some of you may remember. So you would go in this side, you would park in wherever you want to park, and then come out that side as well. It's too wide, two-car-wide, so it wouldn't create a bottleneck. But it would come out this one driveway here. This is an upper-level, because the site is on a hill to some extent, this would be a patio, umbrellas, chairs, a great place to sit and have a nice lunch, or maybe an early dinner as well. So, yeah, so one entrance and one exit for that one particular building. Now, the building next door, as many of you know, is Friendly's. That one could conceivably have two. I'm not quite sure yet. We're working on a couple of different proposals there, so that's somewhat open right now. But this Friendly's site is bigger than this one substantially, so that may create some additional opportunities there to do some very creative things also.
Just to further to try to elucidate the question, and Jim and I haven't discussed this, that's all right. But if, because there are several adjacent properties, I assume the question is, would it be possible to have fewer entrances and exits that service multiple properties?
Actually, no. My initial concern is the traffic on Broad Street already is extremely difficult, extremely tough. Don't get me wrong, I love the concept, but my first question would be, how are you going to address the traffic issues, you know, on Broad Street, either going south or north, with adding 80 units plus, I'd say, a significant amount of commercial as well, which is great? That's why I'm looking at it from the perspective of, is it only one entrance in or out? That would be my initial view, to see if we could get multiple ways to get in and out and not add to the traffic issues that we have on Broad Street right now.
Okay, those are great points. So I guess I would respond in one respect, which is, many of these I would expect would be people that hopefully really accept the notion that you're in a downtown area, there is transportation nearby, and that cars wouldn't be as prominent as you typically would see. So that's the real...
You would hope, but there's no guarantee.
Correct, correct. And we deal with that in the city all the time, and so...
I just came from the city, hence the reason I was late.
Yeah, so I deal with that every day, so I'm with you. But I can tell you that oftentimes, the big concern is multiplicity in cars, and then often, we find that there's many parking spaces left open. We'll sell units with two parking spaces, and almost inevitably, there's one. So it's not the rush coming in and out. They only use it, they get two, but they'll use it for one. But that's, in this particular case, we believe that this is, that the two-wide here is, even if you put two roads, if you put two accesses there, you're still going to have the same issue getting back onto Broad Street. So I think that's an inherent issue, that the width of that road creates challenges already. So I don't know that we can answer that effectively with an absolute one way or the other. I just would like to think that it certainly, the road that was there before was kind of one driveway, so we'll widen that, make sure it's too wide.
And in fairness, I'm not expecting you to answer the question. I mean, that does become a concern. I think you're probably aware, too, that we do have another development on Borough Ave and Plymouth that potentially could be significant. That's within a two-mile radius. That also needs to take in consideration on traffic flow, on density, and things of that nature, not that that's your issue, but like I said, everything looks great here, but my main concern initially is around the traffic flow and the pattern, understanding it is downtown, and that's the hope, that people would be able to leave their car and take public transportation, but there's no guarantees.
Right. We have made provisions as well for zipcars and trying to mitigate that to some extent, but you're right, you really, you can't foresee the absolute of that.
Other questions, comments for Mr. Pascal, Mr. Clarkson, Ms. Loesch?
Hi. You mentioned that there might be some eateries and some retail spaces. Are you looking proactively to bring things here? I know if you say they build it, they will come, but we've had many open shops downtown for many years. How are you looking to fill the spaces to these?
Great question. So we've begun working on that to some extent. I've talked to a few folks that I know in the city. I'm trying to bring a couple of guys I know that have phenomenal restaurants to bring a new eatery. I've heard from the police and the fire as well, that they'd love to have an option in town, and I think that, as well as many of the other folks who are nearby, that, so we have talked to some folks that have staying power substantial and certainly can do that job and create a couple of restaurants that don't exist here, and that really would be just a wonderful, wonderful addition to the center of town. So we're pretty excited by that. I'm also hopeful that there may be some folks that would like to perhaps modernize their space, maybe they want an increase of space that doesn't exist currently, so maybe we can speak to those folks as well. Hope that answers your question.
Yep, thanks.
Other comments for Mr. Pascal, Mr. Clarkson?
Mr. President?
Mr. Columbotus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Pascal, Mr. Clarkson, for coming in. My immediate concern is the density. Our mixed-use bylaw allows for 18 units per acre, and this is a total of 2.5 acres?
No, it's actually, I think it just exceeds three.
So three, so 80 divided by three is?
Fifty-four. I'm sorry.
Twenty-seven, right? Twenty-seven units per acre, almost twice.
Six-point-two-seven.
Right.
Twenty-six-point-seven, actually.
So that's almost double the density that our bylaw calls for. The downtown revitalization plan that this council endorsed called for 15, maximum of 15 units per acre. In our bylaw, we increased that to 18, but still, the 27 is, you know, how many times the 18?
One and a half.
One and a half, okay. So 50% higher. So that's one of my concerns. Another concern is the...
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you.
Do you want to address that first?
Again, I don't know that we're going to solve all these issues here. I mean, I think it's good for you to bring them up, Mr. Columbotus. I don't think it's fair to expect Mr. Clarkson or Mr. Pascal to have the answer, but if you want to kind of address it generally...
Well, I mean, I think if you come in 50% above what our zoning says, you should be able to identify, respond to it.
Yeah, generally, yeah.
So if there's three-plus acres, I think that gives us 18 times three, so we have 54 versus the 80, so I don't think we're 50%. If we took 18 units per acre, we've got 54, right?
So it's 50%. Add half again to 54, and you get 81.
So I think that if we're, we've already found in this town that 15 or 18 doesn't work. And I can appreciate what the council has done, all the efforts, all the hard work that's went in. I sat on that, those committees and those meetings that, I think when one of the consultants was in town here a couple of years ago, and I think they were recommending 25 at the time. I'm just going to tell you, it's just way too light. It just doesn't work, and hence, nobody's done anything. That's why it's sitting the way it is, and I think that it's, this is, quite frankly, this is a very, very light proposal. For this type of expense, for this type of size of property, you would see significantly more in a typical urban setting. And I know this isn't urban, but the money's about the same. You're going to spend a lot of money, very similar dollars, for a return that's not nearly as close as what it would be in the city, or even in some of the other communities. So those are, that's a very real concern. I think that when you speak to this issue, you have to understand that there's a great deal of risk here, a great deal of risk. I'm hopeful that we're able to stabilize these buildings somewhat quickly and move on to the next one, but there's no guarantee. As you mentioned, we're going to bring new restaurants here. I hope that we can, that there's enough people in these buildings so that they will enjoy these restaurants, and that they won't, they won't come like the restaurant that has been in Friendly's, that has come and left, and come and left, and come and left. So I would say to you tonight that 15 or 18 doesn't work, and I would strongly encourage you to keep that in mind as you, as we continue to have these discussions.
Mr. Columbotus?
Another element of our mixed-use bylaw is the requirement that 30% of the gross-floor area be commercial and that no residential units be on the ground floor. Mr. Clarkson said that your proposal is consistent with our ordinance. Is that, meet those two criteria?
So, the first, thank you. The first draft was, this last draft, I think, has two units on that first floor, which I think we're going to wipe those away, because I think in order to be consistent with what we had originally proposed, which is commercial on that whole first floor, we would do that.
But then there's still that 30%. If you've got four floors and three of them are residential, you're at 25% commercial.
Yes, 25. Yes, so we would not meet that.
That might be close enough to deal with. And about the parking, what sort of, how many units, how many spots per residential unit do you provide?
I think we have like 1.91, just under two per space, per unit.
Personally, that makes sense. I mean, I agree with your general premise that not every dwelling unit has two vehicles, and, you know, as we get, as we develop a denser, more walkable downtown, that should work, right? So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions, comments for Mr. Pascal or Mr. Clarkson? I'd just like to thank you both for coming in and giving a presentation and trying to move things forward. Obviously, you hear from the council, there are certain concerns and issues that need to be addressed. I don't think there's anything that we can't, working together, trying to do what's right for the town, not overcome, but I do appreciate you coming in here, Mr. Dutton.
I just had one request for Mr. Pascal, Mr. Clarkson. I know there's some folks in the audience that didn't have an opportunity to see the board, so if, out in the hallway even, they could just give people an opportunity to look for anybody that chooses, that'd be great.
I'm happy to turn this around if you'd like, Mike, as well, unless you'd rather do it out there, whatever works.
I think we're going to move on, I assume, to the next thing, but I know some people may want to take a look at them because they're pretty telling.
Again, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you so much for hearing our proposal, and we look forward to further dialogue. Thank you again.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to just make a motion real quick here, that, you know, I heard the suggestion from Mr. Clarkson about a committee, or I don't know what he called it, but I wrote down committee in my notes, of some people to kind of move forward and move it as expeditiously as possible, looking out for the interests of our town as well. And so I'd like to have a committee made up of Mr. Wood, who represents that area, Mr. Columbotus, who's chairman of the Community and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Avini, who's chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and Mr. Driscoll, who's chairman of the Planning Board, to work with the Town Manager, and any and all of your designees. This might be a good project for Ms. Burke to start on day one, to meet and discuss and do whatever you need to do to, you know, come to a resolution on this, and if it's, you know, I'd like to see it come to a positive resolution. I don't know that that's the right answer, but there should be a right answer between doing nothing and doing that. So I'll make that in form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Haley. Discussion, I have none, Mr. Haley?
I don't think it's a great idea.
Any further discussion?
I'm in support of it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor forming that ad hoc committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to financial update, Mr. Solomati, you're up.
Mr. President, good evening, council members. You need a microphone?
You may want to put the microphone closer to you.
Again, thank you, Mr. President, council members. I'm here for you tonight to give you an overview of our financial results of operation for FY '17, where we sit today for FY '18, some projection numbers for '19, and then a perspective as to where we are with our long-range planning, otherwise known as the five-year forecast. So, without further ado, as I stated, the topics are '17's results of operation, '18 projected end-of-year reserves, '19 financial outlook, and then the long-range planning five-year forecast. What I hope to do is really to solidify some of the things that have brought us collectively, the Town Manager, the financial team, the department heads, to, I think, where we are today, which is a disciplined, policy-driven, fact-based, collective approach to the budgeting process. It has been a challenge at times. There's been a lot of cleanup of old financial matters. There's been some, just organizing so we can kind of look into our financial numbers and understand how they're behaving, but I do want to point to the cooperation, and I see us continuing to do this more effectively. I think the challenge overall to all of this this year is to maintain discipline. I mean, discipline, as we know, is, it can be difficult. So far, what we've been able to, we've faced with is, we've had revenues generated or growing at a significant enough of an increase that we've been able to balance the budget. We're still trending in that direction, but as we go through this, I will point out some things that we'll need to consider and be watchful of. So again, it's the continuation of a disciplined approach. So let's look at the results of operation. General fund local receipts. The impact here was driven by the budget resolution that you set forth, and we were still following at the time when the budget was established for FY '17. The two real important things were, I think, first and foremost was, whatever practice you had in place, the conservative nature of your budgeting for your revenue estimates, and thus, your operating budget was intended to build reserves. Well, the good news is you have, you made significant progress in that respect. And as it relates to local receipts, 85% was the rule that you used, which would have been 85% of the prior-year actuals, so when you were putting together '17's operational budget, you were using FY '15 numbers to determine what you should be estimating in that budget cycle. Some other drivers coming on board, getting things in order, the finance team gave focus to a change in financial policy as it relates to tax title, and the work we began to set in place, the practices we began to set in place, so that we more aggressively and more effectively began to address tax title balances. A number of the collection issues go back numerous years. Those will still haunt us going forward. Anyone that knows, when you're working with something that's in tax title, the sooner you address it through the tax title process, the better, the more aged it becomes, and you can lose the connection between the original owner of record and where that particular property is then or now sitting, as to who is the owner of record. So the penalties and interest number will, in fact, be up for now, as we begin to drive down the receivable balances for tax title and personal property. We also had some one-time revenues that I'll touch on. We had some new revenues, and I will touch on the general fund budget and how it was managed through FY '17. To get into some of the details now, inside the numbers, so to speak, we'll look at the local receipts, we'll look at the budget-to-actual, and I'll be pointing to the category, I'll be pointing to the delta, meaning the budget, in all cases, we're talking about a surplus. So I'll show you the percent over, and I'll show you what drove it. First line, motor vehicle, we were up 6% to budget, which accounted for 179,765 to our bottom line. That had to do with the budget resolution, as I've already mentioned, and we had a record year for receipts for motor vehicle excise, 3,384,765. Under the excise category, that's your meals tax, it was referenced this evening in a prior presentation, and also the hotel tax, which is a new revenue. So we see, we saw a... So we see, we saw a slight growth in the meals tax. And what we saw was a half-year result for the hotel tax. Licenses and permits, again, budget resolution driving the estimate. And we had another record year for licenses and permits, $890,852. And this is going back in both instances for the motor vehicle and the licenses and permits to 2002. That's how far I went back. Penalties and interest, again, I already mentioned our new financial department collection policy as it relates to tax title and personal property tax. Then we had non-recurring revenue, $285,255 from prison mitigation to the work of Angelo D'Amilia, state representative. Hopefully, I did his name proud there. Total surplus on the local receipt, $1,029,222, a total of 20.46%. And if you take out the non-recurring amount, it was 14.79. Kind of makes sense to the 85% of a prior year's actual. Says that your budgeting worked, and you were able to add this to your bottom line. As it relates to the operating budget and budget to actual, it really is a collective management. Michael has a great group. They're very attentive, they're very accountable, and they watch the budgets closely. Collectively, $285,255 was budgetary surplus, or 0.52%, and it was driven by management. So how does that collectively hit our bottom line? On the revenue surplus, as I stated, it was $1,029. Budgetary surplus, $285,255, a total of $1,314,477. So where did those funds go? They went to what your intention was back when you set your budget resolution to reserve. $600 allocated to the general stabilization fund, $109 to the capital stabilization fund, $300 to the sickly buyback, $100 to OPEB, and $200 to unforeseen one-time. You're building reserves in these reserve buckets. Current balance, just so you know at this point in time, you have $300,000 in your sickly buyback. Stabilization, $3,28434 in your stabilization, general fund, your capital, $546,336. Your reserve for OPEB, $326,775, and one-time unforeseen, $200. If we also take in count, there's $266,166 from your prior mitigation funds that has been unspent. You have a total of $4,919,718 sitting in reserves in those various categories. Clearly, the policies that you established, the budget resolution that you established, the diligent approach and the disciplined approach over the last several years have got you to where you are. We hope to continue that in FY '18. We'll take a look at that. We'll look at the impact of the local receipts, again, the operating budget. And I want to point to something that will significantly impact your undesignated fund balance that the DOR will certify next year as free cash. And it's a one-time adjustment, and I'll explain that because it is significant. And there also is an adjustment for overlay that will take place. In the area of local receipts, I anticipate the motor vehicle excises will contribute $85,199 to your bottom line, looking at a 3% above budget. As you can see, that was significant, I anticipated it to be significantly lower than the surplus of last year. What we're seeing is the total number of units, and I'll call a unit either a lease vehicle, a purchase vehicle, dealer vehicle, or some other trailer or unit that needs to be registered with the motor vehicle, registry of motor vehicles. So the total number of units that you have registered within your community is up. The new units, however, are down. So the total units is somewhere around 27,000 plus. You have approximately 26,000 residents. So the number of registered units, if you will, with registry of motor vehicle, exceeds the number of individuals you have living in the community. I don't, and then, excuse me, lastly, what's holding the numbers up and continuing to have them, as I anticipate, climb slightly in FY '18 is, and this was mentioned in an economic update I caught on CNN, that the price for, the sticker price for the average vehicle is climbing. And it has to do with the types of vehicles that are being purchased and the types of options that are becoming standard. So although the units are down, new units are down, the prices are up. Excise, again, meals portion trending 2.5% to last year. Hotel tax should end up being three times last year because we'll have a full year of the hotel tax. We didn't know how that was going to play itself out. So we were very conservative in what we used as an estimate here. Therefore, that's why we see that being three times. Licenses and permits, we see a flattening out. We see us meeting our target. Principal and interest, again, we see that exceeding. The trend is because we're making collections on tax title and old property, a personal property tax. So as the tax, as a point I made earlier, as the tax title balances are reduced, the personal property tax, old balances are reduced, you're going to begin to reduce correlating dollars of penalty and interest. To give you a quick look, not a huge change, but in '16, you had a $1,752,829 in tax title. We sit today at $1,491,239. And our objective by end of year is to get that down to $1,100,000. And into the following year, below $1 million. Our target is between $500,000 and $600,000. It has to do with some unsecured properties, and I won't get into the details, but it will, it'll sit there for quite some time until we go through the process of removing those receivable balances off the books. And then we have the new miscellaneous, the first year of the mitigation agreement with the medical marijuana facility. That's what we estimate will come in and add to our bottom line. So our total there, $573,961. On the operating budget side, right now, I don't anticipate any budgetary surplus. I do believe that we have some surpluses in some certain categories, but we also had some one-time unforeseen expenses that we will probably have to do some moving around with the spring budget transfers that we do as a practice. But at this point in time, we don't see any surplus there. And now we'll move to the one-time, excuse me, the prior year one-time reserve offset adjustments. We'll look at the first one. And this has to do with the fund deficits raised on the FY '18 recap. So I think all council members got a copy of what the, how the free cash, the free cash certification of the department revenue. If you went back and looked at it, you'll see that there's some offsets for deficits. And these deficits go back, some of them go back numerous years, up to 10 years, small grant deficits. Then we had some other major deficits that somehow prior to 2015, and may have to do with the transition over to the new accounting system, maybe the new payroll system, what have you. There was a deficit in the agency fund that deals with retiree health benefits. Again, I think something was charged to an agency fund that should have been charged to the general fund. It was a real expense. So that's something that the DOR was holding against our reserves. And this year, because the room we had in our capacity, we were able to raise that on the recap. So once you raise it on the recap, next year, those funds become available. So that will immediately go to your free cash availability for 2018. There was a one-time healthcare offset adjustment. The auditors and myself feel that we accounted for that correctly. And the DOR, we disagree with the fact that they offset our reserves by that. So it's one-time in the sense it won't be there again next year, and that will free up an additional $215,000. And lastly, the release of FY '18 overlay balance. So during the course of this year, we will be requesting, the town manager will be requesting that the assessors release $400,000. This has to do with a couple of things. Number one, the Municipal Modernization Act allow us to look at what we had for reserves and what we have for receivable balances and unsecured in a collective. Prior to that, you had to look at it year by year by year. So you may have had a small surplus here, but then you had a deficit there. So we held off until the Modernization Act allow us to do an analysis to determine collectively what we need to maintain in our overlay reserves. And we feel comfortable in requesting a $400,000 release. Again, that's an offset that reduces your free cash, and it impacted FY '17. So this automatically get released, and it will increase your bottom line reserves at the end of FY '18. This is significant. It's $858,365. So in summary, the total that I'm predicting at this point in time, revenue surplus, budgetary surplus, reserve adjustment, a total projected end-of-year reserves of $1,432. What's significant about this is that we can actually, I feel comfortable in actually making these statements today. Now, there's a margin of errors, this unforeseen, unforeseen things that can occur. But at this point in time, we're comfortable in that being our end-of-year free cash available for allocation. And we would go through the same process, allocating to the stabilization fund, general fund, capital fund, sickly buyback, OPEB, and unforeseen one-time stabilization fund. So there we are, looking forward into '18, and now preparing ourselves for the FY '19 budget. We'll take a look at some economic indicators, give you an idea of the revenue projection methodologies. We're starting to use the general fund revenue projections, the general fund revenue sharing projection. And that, for those who recall last year, is what we determined were the growth revenues that we shared in our calculation with the Bridgewater Regional School District, and allow us to calculate what portion of the revenue that we achieved in our projection for FY '19 that will be shared appropriately with the Bridgewater Regional School District. And in fact, ends up becoming what they're budgeting, what we're recommending for their budget increase that we can support from a structurally sound perspective. Because that's what we're trying to do here, is maintain a structurally sound budget that we use recurring revenues to take care of recurring expenses, and not one-time revenues. Because when you begin to use one-time revenues, you create a structural deficit. And that's an important aspect of what we look forward into FY '19. So we'll look at the macro and micro level of these. And we go to, don't give away my little joke there, not that it's all that funny. So the question is, where are we in the stage of our current economic growth period? State of Massachusetts, county, national. And I can only look to provide a perspective for you folks this evening So if we look at the historical comparison as it relates to just the areas where we saw some record numbers this year, excuse me, as a result of operation for FY '17 as a benchmark, new growth, motor vehicle excise, the excise for meals and hotel, penalties and interest, and licenses and permits. I can cite further examples by saying that your new growth number in FY '17 ended up at 905. That was a, 905,000, that was a historical benchmark. Your motor vehicle, as I mentioned earlier, 3.3 million. Your meals and room and your hotel, 415,655. Your licenses and permits, 890,852, all historical levels. And these historical levels have been climbing since the bottom out from a revenue standpoint back in 2010 and 11. So the question is, where the heck are we? Reference to F Troop, who was a F Troop fan, anyone here? You know how they got that name, right? Went over the cliff, and one of the Indians said, "Where the heck are we?" So the question is, really, where are we? I don't know. The question is, is it, are we in a slowdown of our growth? Are we in a decline of our growth? Are we in a stabilized place with our growth? And I say, "Our growth," I'm talking the multiple levels. What's going on in Bridgewater, what's going on in the county, what's going on in the state, what's going on in the national government? And I think the answer is, I'm not quite sure right now. There are some indicators that I'll point to that suggest things are slowing down, but it's too soon to say. What I can point to is a perspective of, so what's the, what's the revenue cliff? Because I'll describe a revenue cliff that occurred back when, you know, things were going well for the community, all communities, local receipts, new growth. So you had a point in time where you had a slowdown that brought you from, let's say, 2004 and '05 to 2010, which is your really lowest point for your local receipts. And 2011 was your lowest point for your new growth. And I'll compare that to your high point, watermark, where we stand as a result of 2017. So there's a gap here. So what goes up must come down. The question is, how quickly does it come down, and what will the gap eventually be? That's the million-dollar question. So as it relates to new growth, there's a $709,196 difference between 2011 and 2017 new growth. That's the delta. The delta between 2010 and 2017 local receipts is $2,681,150, with a total delta of $3,389,346. That is a significant number. How will that number change over the next three to five years? Even a flattening out would have a significant impact. If your local receipts and your new growth began to flatten out, it's going to have a significant impact on how you budget going forward. The magical number that I alluded to last year, if you look at it historically, 3.2 was the total of your new growth, your growth in local receipts, your growth in state aid. So that's the number where you can maintain or were able to maintain service levels, and get to a point where you could maintain service levels. So we'll be looking at that number somewhere between 3.2 and forward, and what will happen as it relates to the growth going forward? Because then that will determine what you'll need to be considering as you look at your budget process, and whether or not reserves need to come into play to stabilize your budget process and stabilize the services that you have. Some other indicators, unemployment. Interesting to note that there is a slight change that worth picking a peek at. In FY '16, excuse me, in calendar year '16 to '17, it was 2.5% in Bridgewater. It now resides as of November '17 at 2.8. The state of Massachusetts was 2.8. The state of Massachusetts was 2.8 in November of 16 and now is at 3.3 as of November 17. The next piece, I think, is important to note because if a municipality, and this is pretty consistent throughout all municipality, wishes to take control of its own destiny, the only place that they have at this point in time that I see is sound economic development. But it can't be something that a community just talks about. I mean, no disrespect to anyone, it's a hard nut. It's a lot of work. It involves many different departments, as was alluded to, public safety, issues of traffic, issues of zoning, issues of density. I mean, we can go on and on. But this is going to be a challenge. So what we need to know going forward is, at the local level, what's active? What are the projects we have out there going now in the area of residential, commercial, and industrial? What potentially we could see as it relates to personal property in the commercial and industrial area? Then we have to know what's in our pipeline. So we need to reach back, and we're going to be doing this, to the zoning and planning so that we can get a good handle of what projects haven't hit the permit phase, but they are in fact going through the process of presenting, preparing themselves for that. Tonight was an example of a process before the process. And then, what's the town's inventory? When I say the town's inventory, I'm alluding to not the town's possessions, the town's properties. What I'm speaking to or pointing to is what properties are designated within the community that are privately owned, that are residential, zoned, commercially zoned, and industrially zoned? Is it clear? Is it clear that they are zoned properly? Is the zoning bylaw up to date? And I think the town manager will point to an order he has to review that, the current zoning, for this reason. Because that inventory turns into revenue. The example tonight was, if that conceptual project were to happen, you have recurring revenue of $450,000 roughly, that doesn't take into account your motor vehicle, that's just on the property tax side, your motor vehicle excise, because you would have vehicles coming to the town, your meals tax and so forth and so on. Property tax for, excuse me, personal property tax for the business establishment. So if there's not, if there's one thing that I think we begin to wrap our arms around is how we begin to turn the inventory into revenue. The next part to look at is new car sales. This is the first year, this year being at the end of calendar year 17, that the new car sales number did not exceed the previous year's new car sales. It's the first year since the economic recovery began. That's important to know. Because 3.3 or 3.4 million dollars of your local receipts comes from that. So we have to watch that extremely carefully. And then we need to make sure we understand what's going on with the home sales, both regionally and locally, as a precursor to what might be going on in the economy. We have work to do there. There are a number of other economic indicators that we'll begin to explore when you start to really look at the methodologies for putting together a five-year forecast. I'll talk a little bit more about the methodologies and where we are with the ones that we have been making improvements to. So let's go back to some definitions. When I refer to growth revenues, those are the ones that are tied to the economic condition. They trend upward and downward with the economy. They're included in our revenue sharing model. So the more we can get a handle on that, the more we have available to share, not only for the growth of the services and/or to support the existing service or to support what I think is a budgetary priority for the town manager, and that is maintenance of our buildings and working to improve our infrastructure, as well as what we share with the Bridgewater Regional School District. So the new growth objective, we want to shorten the data collection cycle. We want our new growth number earlier this year. And we will work very, very hardly to get that, hard to get that done. We want to begin to understand what's in the inventory pipeline. We want to identify and define a clear list of inventory by category. And working with the assessor and working with our assessing company, a zoo, a zoning and planning folks, will at least get our own internal understanding of this under the current zoning bylaws. Motor vehicle units, as I mentioned, average age is trending upward. This is in line with the industry trends. We need to watch that closely. We have a very extensive analysis that's been done over the last four years of our billing. We'll be looking to move our billing up and get our large commitment done so we can see what that might look like this year and begin to project next year sometime in the month of February. We're going to look more closely and understand what's going on with our other excise. We're going to look at how our meals tax will behave under what I would call a new economy, the economy of the millennials. What they like to do is go out and have beers and go out to eat and spend time doing that. They buy less things and buy more experiences. That's something I've read throughout periodicals and studies that have been done on the millennial group. So that's a good thing. Because instead of buying things, they're buying experiences. So we'll be monitoring that within some of those contexts. License and permits, again, shorten the data collection cycle, the inventory pipeline, define a clear list of inventory by category. And then recurring revenue offsets, what we're looking at there. Those are the revenues, for definition purposes, that we use really offset expenses for providing of services. They're fee-based. They're not tied to the economic conditions. They're recurring, but they're really designed to offset related general fund operating expenses, insofar as the Municipal Modernization Act has allowed municipalities to generate more revolving funds for these types of fees, pull them out of the general fund and to be used to offset direct expenses that correlate to those fees. Non-recurring revenues, they're never included in our revenue sharing because of our commitment to creating a structurally balanced projection and a structurally balanced operating budget. So where are we looking at now for next year as far as some numbers? In the area of property tax, our additional levy will be $1,019,835. Sorry, wrong slide. Here we go. I'm with you. Property tax additional levy, $1,001,900. Our property tax new growth, if we use an averaging methodology, is $450,000. State aid, collective state aid, although last year I think there was about a 3% increase in the chapter 70 number. If you look at it collectively, it's about a 1.2%. We're going to use that number for our projection purposes at this time. Local receipts, about 2.5%, being driven by the categories I've already mentioned. Other available funds, there are going to be an influx of some revenues. These other available funds are used to offset salaries in the general fund from revenues from the ambulance fund, from our conservation receipt fund, and some other miscellaneous funds that offset salaries by transferring those funds into the general fund. The number that will increase will be on the ambulance side because we will have the safer grant run out halfway through FY19. So the additional funds from the ambulance fund, which can be sustained, by the way, for FY19, will need to be transferred in to offset that increase. So then we take our revenues and we look at the general fund revenue sharing projection. And that's slightly different than the number before because, again, what we do is we look at, as I defined a few slides back, it's the, those revenues that are growth revenues that are tied to economic conditions that we share with the Bridgewater Regional School District. So the property tax number is $1,469,835. State aid, the 48 to 11, and local receipts, 111,783, for a total of 1,298,29. Town's allocation based on our formula that we implemented in FY18 budgetary process, 51% allocated to the town, 49% allocated to the school, or 798,616. In FY18, the school received a 3.21% increase based on this revenue sharing here. They would receive a 3.4% increase over FY18. What are the cost drivers on the town side? We have contractual changes of $465,000 or 3.5%. If we estimate the school assessment, increase of at 3.4, that's 798,16. Our healthcare costs are going to go up based on if we use FY18 numbers. And at this point in time, the general, my general impression is, the MMHG's numbers, their reporting looks more healthier at this point in time than where it was last year at the same time. That broad statement. And if last year we had a 8.35%, I envision that that would be conservative enough. That number will be nailed down, as well as many of these other numbers as we move ahead. The retirement piece is, in fact, we've been given those numbers for 18, excuse me, 19 and 20, so that's an actual number that we need to plan on. Total, $1,698,126. So those are your cost drivers, those are your revenue sharing. I'm not going to go into detail on these next few slides. Just suffice to say that we have been working behind the scenes to follow a model from the GFOA, best practices for financial forecasting, and those are outlined here. We will be providing this to the council members, and I'll ask the town manager to publish this on the town website. So as we go forward and we start to really dig into our five-year forecast, this is the process that we will use. A lot of the legwork's been done, but now the hard work needs to be done. The assumptions need to be reviewed, the methodology needs to be selected, the collective participation needs to happen, and we need to make sure that we are able to present this information in a clear, concise manner. And we want to make sure that our forecast is linked to our reserve policy, a structural policy that is maintaining a structurally balanced, sound budget, and a long-term sustainability policy. And as well as what's required, a big, a large discussion will be around our capital improvement program over the next month or two. So to sum up, what I hope we're able to accomplish and move closer towards as we move into FY19 and beyond is zoning clarity, that doing business in Bridgewater begins to work, the DB and BWTR. Know what we have for inventory and begin to execute an economic development plan that I know the town manager is eager to move on. We want to make sure we're sound in our budget planning and forecasting, continue to improve our decision-making process. Don't allow key cost drivers to outpace our revenue growth, which has a lot to do with how we negotiate our contracts and are mindful of what we are able to afford as a community. Make sure we don't create structural deficits, recurring revenues with recurring expenses. Continue to be disciplined and methodical in our approach and driven by clear policies and credible information. I know I threw a lot at you. I hope it was helpful, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there questions for the finance director? Seeing none. With the town council's indulgence, we'll skip the town manager's report at this point in time to go to discussions, joint meeting with town manager, finance committee, and school committee chair or designee. So we invite you guys to step up, the school committee, and certainly introduce yourselves and say hi to all of us friendly folks once again. Do you want to, are you going to call a meeting to order?
Yes, if I could. Special meeting of the school committee with a quorum being present called to order at 8:56 PM. Thank you, Mr. Council President. I am Pat Riley, currently chair. Next to me, our vice chairman, Mr. Michael Dolan, our superintendent, Mr. Derek Swenson. And we also have members with us here, Mr. Jason Hammond, Mrs. Lillian Holbrook, Mr. Kevin Marrera, Mrs. Julie Sklip Harris, and our budget chair, Dr. Susan Prudowski. Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you. And I guess we're here to hear from the school committee at this point. Obviously, everything's very preliminary. You heard a very detailed presentation by our finance director. But we, you know, we need to hear, as he said, we need credible information and make sure we're making the best decision. So the sooner we can get out in front of things, the better. So maybe I'll turn it over to Mr. Swenson.
Please.
Thank you, Council President Ms. Gibbons, members of the town council. It's an honor to be here this evening. The FY19 budget is currently underway. We have met with all of our principals, our department heads, and now, we are now creating my preliminary budget, which we will be presenting at our next school committee meeting on January the 24th. That will be at the Rainham Middle School at 7:00 PM. At this point, a couple of things that are, you know, sticking out in terms of cost drivers for this budget is definitely an increase in our student population in the areas of kindergarten through fourth grade on both sides of the district. So there will be some additional staffing requests to help combat some of the higher class sizes that we are experiencing throughout the district. Also, we are having an increase in some social emotional issues with our students. So we are looking to increase some of our social emotional supports in terms of programming, but also social workers and school adjustment counselors that can assist our students in their social emotional development, especially from an early intervention standpoint in our elementary schools. So there was a couple of areas of our budget right now that we really foresee being some of the cost drivers in FY19. Again, it's, we're really pretty much in the preliminary stages. Once I present my preliminary budget in January, the committee will then vote. At that point, it becomes their budget. And then we'll work collectively together through our financial subcommittees to hopefully put a budget forward to the towns that is fiscally responsible, but also serves the needs of the students within our district. So that's where we are currently. Again, preliminary stages, so we'll know more in the coming months.
Thank you. Ms. Riley, would you like to add anything?
Only that our public hearing will be on March 7, and the school committee will actually vote on the final budget on March 28.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan?
The only thing I would add is the, to echo what Mr. Swenson said about class sizes, that's been a challenge for us this year. It continues to be a challenge as we continue to grow as a community with housing development. With housing comes kids, and we need to educate them. So it's just something that we all need to be mindful of, not just the school committee.
Thank you. Dr. Prudowski, do you want to add anything as budget chairman, or they covered it all? They covered it all? Okay. All right. At that point, then, maybe we'll open it up to questions from the council. Questions for the school committee? Mr. Swenson, anybody? And I'll put it out there because I'm intimately involved with Mr. Dolan and And I'll put it out there because I'm intimately involved with Mr. Dolan and the superintendent and the town manager. This school budget has nothing to do with the Mitchell. That's on a separate track, and we're going to be going through, we just hired a, or authorized the, you explain it, Mr. Swenson. You've got all the details way better than I do, but the OPM.
Our school building committee last night authorized us to move forward in negotiations with the top candidate for an owners' project manager. In fact, this afternoon, myself along with our business director, Kathy Macedo, began negotiations. They told us they had to sleep on it, which is, I found to be a good response considering the offer I presented them. But I am confident that we'll be able to put something in place probably by the close of business tomorrow, and then we'll bring that information forward to the school building committee that is, that you are indeed a part of, Mr. Fitzgibbons. So, we are excited that that process is, we've really worked diligently to expedite this process through eligibility and now into feasibility. And once we get the owners' project manager on board, the next step would be then to move forward with the selection of designers, and that goes through the MSBA along with selection committees, members of the school building committee that we currently have. And then at that point, they begin to study what options are feasible based upon possible repair, renovation, renovation with an addition, or a total rebuild. So, it's an exciting time. It's a busy time, but I give kudos to our incredible school building committee. We've worked so diligently to move this process forward. Our subcommittees, Mr. Dolan is the chair of the communications committee, Mr. Garrish is the chair of the OPM committee, and I can't say enough about the yeoman's work that our director of facilities, Mr. Paul Fox, and our director of business services, Mrs. Macedo, have done to really, truly expedite this process on a pretty aggressive timeline. We're trying to get approval of the OPM by February 5th, and that is a timeline that, you know, gave us about a month and a half with the holidays thrown in to get this process underway, and we're in really good shape at this point.
Thank you. Anything else for the school committee or the superintendent? Well, we appreciate you coming in to visit us. Do you want to get your meeting adjourned, and we'll move on?
Sure, absolutely. And again, just thank you very much, and also thank your town manager for working closely with our superintendent. It's so important to keep that line of communication open so we can do what we're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, I'll then call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Mr. Dolan, second by Mrs. Holbrook. We are adjourned at 9:03. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have a town manager's report, or are we going to move on?
We're going to move on.
How do I answer that? I'll give a quick report. I don't want to keep people here beyond a reasonable hour. Just give you a quick update on the storm. We did have a pretty good response, I think, and the roadways department did a, did a pretty fine job considering we got between, anywhere between 14 and 17 inches of snow. We had 70 contractors, over 70 contractors on the, on our roads, as well as all the town employees and folks that we bring in, retirees that we bring in to help us. So, we have, we do continue to clear sidewalks. Got two sidewalk vehicles that are out. They've been out day and night since the storm, so I think we're almost wrapped up with what we can do on sidewalks. Central Square, I think, a few councilors that asked about Central Square. Tomorrow night, we will close down Central Square to parking and clear out the snow that has piled up in the regular places. So, just so people know, we don't intentionally pile snow in front of handicap spots and so forth, but we do have limited places to put it. So, when, when we got a snow like this one, that's virtually the only place we can actually put the snow, is where you see them, see the snow piled on a regular basis. So, but that will be gone by, hopefully by the end of the evening, the end of the night tomorrow night. I want to thank those who, including one of your own, who helped clear fire hydrants. I do think residents should understand that it's very important. In fact, one of the, one of the items on my report is, is how busy the fire and police departments have been since the storm, and we did have a house fire, had two fires that they had to report to. One was a house fire, which was likely due, likely due to a space heater, likely started by, by a space heater. So, I want to warn people that they need to be careful when they're using a space heater. I also want to remind people to clear hydrants because the fire department was able to get that fire under control pretty quickly because the hydrant was cleared out. So, thanks to those that cleared out those, those hydrants. We also responded to a number of frozen pipe damage reports because of the cold weather. The new Bridgewater Pediatrics Building had a fair amount of damage due to burst pipes, Tillinghast Hall on the BSU campus, and then a number of residences. We also had a couple of calls about frozen sewer pipes, and so we gave some advice to those folks about how to deal with that. We also had a frozen sewer pipe in the library, which is the second time in five years that that's happened. So, I asked Sean Daly to see if there was a fix for that, and he is not going to do it himself. He would if he could, but he's going to re-pipe one of the sewer lines into a different line so it exits the building in a line that's probably six to seven feet underground instead of the line that runs under the driveway, which is probably only about a foot and a half. So, that, that is in the works, so we won't have to deal with that again. Just want to let the council know that Bristol Plymouth students have begun to do some electrical demo work on the second floor of town hall, and my thanks to them, since, my sincere thanks to them because they are battling through the cold weather. There's only, we only have heat in town hall in the, in the rooms that we have file storage. So, they're up there, and it looks like they're having a good time and enjoying themselves, so more power to them, but, but they will be there for about the next three weeks or so. I think, as most of the council knows, our email servers are down, and the company is continuing to work on that. They've had to re, essentially, I don't know the details, but they've essentially had to replace the entire database. There are a number of factors that went into that, but the cold, actually, the extreme cold forced the, the air conditioning to fail in the server rooms, and so that caused an overheating. So, Brad came in on Friday or Thursday night, and it was about 105 degrees in there. So, we got that fixed, and the email servers should be up. They're working on it all night tonight, so they, those should, should be up in the morning, finally. Reminder to, for folks to complete the annual census, that's important to us as it, as it does help us with our federal and state grant funding, grant requests. It also, this year, contains dog license renewals, so I encourage people to get that back as soon as possible. Water Department will be starting on their water meter installation project that you voted the money for a month or two ago, and that replacement project will begin in January. Residents will certainly be contacted prior to the companies coming to their doors, but that, that will start. And as I mentioned at the time, that'll allow cloud-based reading. We won't have to send meter readers into people's houses anymore. It'll also allow people to log on if they choose and watch their own water consumption and keep an eye on that so they know exactly what they're using. So, it's, it's a big step for us, and I think positive one. Reminder that nomination papers are, are out for the 2018 elections, which take place towards the end of April of 2018. So, you can check with the town clerk's office or go onto the town clerk's website for guidance and open seats if you are interested. Also, I think there was a brief, someone briefly touched on it. I've been meeting with Carlton Hunt. Dr. Hunt is the chair of our master plan committee, and we are looking to form an ad hoc advisory committee on the overall Central Square revitalization effort. This is obviously something that's different than, than the committee that, that your, that the council just formed to look at Mr. Pascal's development, but, but I'm looking to develop a pretty broad-based committee to look at the report, the 2014 downtown redevelopment report, and, and to give advice on exactly how we're going to walk through achieving that. So, there's a lot of good stuff in there. We've gotten some parts of the way, but there's a lot more to do, and I think it's time to develop that committee, form that committee, and develop a plan to, to get to the next steps on that. So, if there is anybody interested in that, it's probably going to be a two- or three-year commitment, and it hopefully will result in really great things in our downtown, and I'm happy to, if anybody's interested, reach out to me, and we'll sit down and have a discussion about that. So, that's what I have for this evening, and thank you.
Questions for the town manager? Mr. Colomotus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, what is, what's the status? Are we going to apply for additional grant money through the Green Communities Act this year? So, every year, we're eligible to apply for discretionary funds. Is there anything in the pipeline on that?
Dr. Hunt has a couple of things coming up. I think the grant applications are due in March, I'm pretty sure, and I know he has a couple of items. One being LED streetlight replacement project, which would replace our current streetlights with LED lights. That's, that's a several-step initiative. First step would be obtaining a price from National Grid to actually purchase the current lights, and then, and then moving forward with a replacement program. So, we're looking at the best way to do that. I think it's a good idea, but we're looking at the best way to do that and to try to minimize the expense to the town in the process. So, that's one item, and I know he's got a couple of other things in the works.
Do you know what the payback is on something like that?
On LED streetlights?
LEDs use a tenth of what the lights use for...
I want to say it's, five years sticks in my head, but I don't quote me on that one. But it's also, I mean, that's, that's a, you know, dollar-for-dollar kind of payback. I mean, if we can get secure grant funding from Green Communities and additional grant funding possibly from the state to offset that, then we're that much better off.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Mr. Haley?
No.
Oh, okay. Anything else for the town manager? Mr. Colomotus?
I don't know if this is better addressed to you. Are applicants for the vacant council seat being channeled to Mr. Dutton or to you as...
They're going through the town, the council clerk.
Okay.
Such, such, such as they are so far.
Are they?
Well, we, I'd say we set a date for January 12th to come back as a closing date, and we'll see what we get then.
Okay. Thanks.
I deliberately avoided the process, so I don't have any biases going forward.
Right. Thanks.
Anything else for the town manager? All right. Seeing none for the town manager, we'll move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to legislation for action. It's my understanding that Order 2017039 needs to be postponed this evening. Mr. Wood, would you like to...
I'm sorry, where are we now? 39.
Services for zoning consultant.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Dutton, that's the, the order we talked about earlier? That was the one that you're sponsoring, I believe?
Yes. Well, there are actually two. They sound similar with drastically different dollar amounts.
They are.
But the, the first one is one that we want to keep on the burner, but we, I don't believe we can vote tonight because the finance committee has not, has not voted it.
Okay. And the same thing on Order FY18015, transfer order, temporary consulting services, community and economic development, same issue. Yes, Mr. Colomotus?
Can I just ask, does the finance committee have quorum? I mean, do they have a full complement? Do they have enough members to reach quorum if they'll...
They do, they met quorum last night, and I gather that one member had to leave, and they broke quorum. But I am expecting, and I've talked to the chair of the finance committee about this, we do expect, we have a full complement now with one exception. I think the council needs to, has one seat available, but we do have a full complement, and I know the chair and Josh are reaching out to try to get meeting dates that can be, can stick and be consistent moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the second one, the 1815, was the one I was thinking of, Mr. Dutton.
Yes, and that one, I can address that. We, I, we had a budget and finance committee meeting just prior to this meeting, and I am, what I told the committee was I can withdraw this based on the fact that we've made an appointment for community and economic development director. Those funds would remain in the salary line item and would be additional, I never want to say extra funds, but would be available if we needed to move those after she arrived and found that we needed some consulting help in addition, so...
So, it's your intent that this not come back on an agenda?
Right now, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to acceptance of a gift, Order OFY180116, gazebo renovations. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Is there a motion to amend, Mr. Wood?
Yes. You know, giving up my minutes to the town clerk so she can write them up takes them away from me, so this is a problem.
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion to amend that in the second whereas...
Yes.
We add community partners of $6,250.
And I'll second that.
And also amend in the explanation that we would include the Bridgewater State Universal Foundation as one of the other generous donations.
And I'll second that.
All right. I have no further discussion. Mr. Wood?
I just have a question. Did the finance committee actually vote on this one? I know they only covered a couple items.
They did vote on this. Anything that involves revenue, they made sure to vote on.
All right. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right. Now, when we're on the main motion, anybody want to discuss anything further on that?
Yeah, I'll just thank everyone that participated in the gift. It's, you know, it's for the gazebo, and I understand the work, at least some of the work was done, and, you know, that's an outstanding item in the middle of Legion Field, so it's great to have it screwed up.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Yes. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Suza?
Yes.
Almeyer?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
And it's my understanding, Order FY18018, a fixed town clerk's salary was not dealt with by the finance committee, and so we'll postpone till the point where they do.
Correct.
Thank you. Moving on, Officer Demora, thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Order FY18019, collective bargaining agreement ratification, Bridgewater Police Association. I'll make a motion to approve.
So, I'll move, second.
By Mr. George. I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Mr. President, this, as I explained, at first reading, this is actually a fairly straightforward agreement and is good for one year, that being FY18. We've increased the annual clothing allowance by $100. We are increasing compensation by 1.25% on July 1st of 2017, and then again, 1.25% on January 1st of 2018. We've increased detail rates to reflect something more in line with the area towns. We've used the opportunity to redefine what a detail is and what roadwork is, so that, that's benefited to, obviously, the town and the union, I think. We've also negotiated language that provides more flexibility to both the town and, and qualifying retirees and how we pay out the sick leave buyback, which I think is, is helpful to both parties. And we've also added language that, that allows the chief and the force to work out some mutually beneficial shift change assignments and shifts...
This is a contract that's sustainable within the operating revenues of the town as we foresee them, and that they don't, it doesn't create a structural deficit moving forward at all. Is that true?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any further questions for the town manager, or any further discussion of the contract? Mr. Wood?
I'll just say that we did cover this subject tonight under the budget and finance committee, and we voted three to zero to recommend it to the council.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this will require a roll call vote.
George?
Yes.
Mr. Columbotes?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Eight in favor?
All right. Moving on to old business, Ordinance D FY 18009, again, believe for the, there's a need to postpone this, Mr. Dutton?
Correct.
So, we will do that. Moving on to new business, Order OFY 18020, conservation restriction, Deer Hollow Wildlife Trust, Colonial Drive, submitted by the town manager. Would you like to explain, Mr. Dutton?
Mr. President, this comes as a result of a planning board decision under the zoning bylaw that allows for open space development, and essentially, the developer is required by the zoning bylaw and the planning board to set aside a certain amount of acreage for open space within the development, and that is what this does. So, the Conservation Commission holds the conservation easement, and the council has to approve that, and the state, through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, also has to, has to sign off on that. So, that's what this is. It's a development off of Colonial Drive. The acreage is about a little over 20 acres of open space that will be permanently protected by this conservation easement.
Any questions for the town manager? Mr. Wood?
Is there a map for this? I can't, I can't visualize where it's sitting.
We can, we can get you a map, actually. That's, when it gets to committee, we'll certainly have a map. When it comes back to the council, we'll get a map. We'll get a map to the councilors.
And if this becomes conservation restriction, does this fall under the catalog of other areas with open space and possible usage and stewardship and things like that?
We don't have a stewardship responsibility. We just hold the conservation easement.
Thank you.
Are there questions for the town manager? Is there a motion to send to the Community and Economic Development Committee?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Haley?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion, Mr. Haley?
None.
Mr. Wood?
I'll say.
Columbotes? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments. Anyone here from the public who'd like to speak? Please get up. Officer Demora. By the way, I think I speak on behalf of the council to all of the law enforcement officers here, saying happy National Law Enforcement Officer Appreciation Day. I said it earlier at the beginning, but you guys are here, so no sense in not saying it again.
I'm wrong. We may hear from this as well. I'm speaking on behalf of the
All these trees are trying to fail.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Firm handshakes.
Good to know.
All right. Any other citizens' comments here during the open portion here? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments, and we'll start with Mrs. Loesch.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I see some of the school members, school committee members still here. So, the volunteer community hours that the kids do is an awesome program. So, the lions in the center of town, I like to mention this at this time of year, you know, we had the decorations up for the holiday season. We had help from the kids, some of the kids putting them up, and in the, it was zero degrees the day we took it down, and you'll see sticks still on the ground because we can't get them out of the ground. But the kids helped on that. It helps, the kids helped with the eyeglass cleaning areas. I know there's a Leo's Club that's in the high school, but they help in other areas too, and I think it's a fantastic program, and I hope that Bridgewater and Rainham communities really know about the program and, you know, get the kids into an area where they can learn about different activities and different work areas, for example, or different efforts. It's a good program, and that's, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Haley?
Boy, was that a lot of snow.
That's not snow.
And it was mentioned that, you know, on social media that there were some hydrants not shoveled out, and there was that debate back and forth of the discussion, and is it still the old-school way? If it's in front of your house, do you shovel it? Yes, you do. And if you don't, we will. No, we won't. You do it, please. Growing up in Bridgewater and seeing how the roads have been over the years and the various storms, particularly paying attention nowadays because I'm on this council, I kind of did a little extra driving around, whereas before in my teens, I'd be driving around in my dad's SUV, maybe having one of the police officers try and get me. The roads were great, not as slippery as they were in the past. It was, I expected, knowing that there's a little bit of tax on the, TAX, by the way, constraint on some of the highway workers and what they have in their ability was going to be coming into this year. I was impressed with what we saw with the amount of snow coming down versus what was removed. That's all I need to say about the storm, and that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
I wish the entire committee and everyone a happy New Year and healthy one. We're going to need it. More snow's coming.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President, and a happy New Year to everybody. I just want to thank the Department of Public Works for the work they did during the storm and all the things they had to deal with. I want to, I appreciate the presentation that we got tonight from our finance director. I think it was very, very thorough, and we have a clear picture of what our revenue will be. It's to see how the expenditure side pans out, and we'll move on from there. I want to say, Mr. President, that three years goes by pretty fast. It was three years ago that I contemplated on whether to run for council after taking a few years off after the transition from selectman to councilman, so I am going to be trying to seek my seat again. I'll be getting my nomination papers signed by residents over the next few weeks, and I hope I can continue to serve the people of Bridgewater as a councilman. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Columbotes?
I'd just like to point out that for citizens who are looking to get involved and learn about issues going on in town, that Councilor Wood has started a Facebook page called Bridgewater Roundtable. And I've often been frustrated over the years with the Bridgewater Residence Page is useful if you want to find a plumber or talk about an event, but there's an awful lot of commercial stuff on that site and that, that site, and that has its value. But I think this page, Bridgewater Roundtable Facebook page dedicated specifically to civic issues is a really good forum for people to share ideas, share news, so I would encourage everyone to look at that, and it's kind of a stepping stone to getting involved, and maybe after looking at that, you'll decide you want to volunteer and become more active in town government. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Thank you. So, first off, happy New Year to everyone. Apologize for being late. I'm really not used to having such sparse crowds when we walk in. All kidding aside, though, I really do hope that the people that were here for a couple of months do take the next step of continuing that involvement outside of, you know, a topic that they were very passionate about to help the town in many different ways. I think we've said this a million times. We have needs across the board. We're always looking for experience, but people that are willing to put the time in to learn and to help the town, I don't think we're ever going to say no to. So, I would, I would hope that the 100-plus people, we could get a percentage of them to continue that involvement in different aspects. I also want to say thank you to Public Safety, Public Works, the school department for all of the foresight pre-storm, and also all of the work that they did post-storm to keep the residents safe and sound, our students safe and sound. And the last thing that I'd like to say too, and I saw this a couple times, is in situations that we've had and we probably will have in the wintertime, it's always a good idea to check on a neighbor. I think I read a couple stories of people that have elderly neighbors or even neighbors that they haven't seen in a while to go over, knock on a door, see how things are going. And in the Facebook world, I saw a lot of people just asking for help and getting help from total strangers in the town as well, which takes a lot of courage and makes me feel pretty, pretty proud of the community that I live in, so that's about it.
Thank you. I'd just like to add my thanks to all the folks in the town and the school department who worked so hard to get us through the storm. I'd also like to, you know, recognize National Grid and all the work they've done in trimming back trees, upgrading their infrastructure around here. I didn't see nearly the level of worries about power outages as we have in the past, and especially with the wind we had, that was a really great thing to see. So, that's important. And finally, I'd like to comment about the presentation we saw about Broad Street, and I'm sure everybody's seen the new Winston Churchill movie before Christmas, right? And, you know, this that came here tonight, it's not the end, it's not the beginning of the end. It is, if anything, the end of the beginning. I have full faith and confidence that Mr. Wood, Mr. Columbotes, Mr. Ravini, Mr. Driscoll, and the town manager and his resources can work well together with the proponent to come up with something that not only works for the proponent, but also works for the town, and look forward to that, that coming forward as quickly as possible to the council and actually moving down there and making a difference. And combined with the town manager's Central Square Committee, I think it's nice to see concrete movement in getting things done down there. So, I appreciate all those efforts. That said, we have no need for an executive session tonight, so I could take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Made by Mr. George, seconded by Mrs. Loesch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.